We will call to order this special meeting of the Dickinson City Commission of December 28th, 2015. The record should show that we have four commissioners present. We have a limited agenda today with first item on the agenda being the consent agenda. One item that anyone would like to discuss on the consent agenda. If not, we'll look for a motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We'll vote Mr. Frenzel, Mr. Oatmans, Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair of both sides, that motion carries. You have accounts payable in front of you, paper copies for this meeting. Look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable.
We have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on accounts payable? If not, we'll vote Mr. Oatmans, Mr. Decker, Mr. Frenzel. Chair of both sides, that motion carries. Okay, the main purpose for our meeting today is the year-end budget amendments and transfers for 2015. Mr. Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members of the commission. So today, as Mr. Jackson mentioned, I'll be going through some of the proposed budget amendments as well as some of the encumbrances we're looking for for 2016. I will just start on the list of the information you received in your packet, and also it's up on the slide. So starting off right away with the -- we'll go through the expenditures, starting off with the general fund. So the first expenditure we have is the contingency fund. And for the West River Community Center maintenance reserve, we originally budgeted $100,000. We'll be bumping that up to 200 -- we'll be bumping it up by $210,000 to a $310,000 budget, just based on amount they spent for maintenance in 2015.
And, excuse me, Mr. Maury, this is a one-year bump up we're saying?
Just one year.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that expected to be continuous, or is that something they incurred that we didn't anticipate, or?
Commissioner Decker, that's a great question. The facility that we own, the community center itself, was built in 2004. So what their -- the unexpected expenditure that required this one to be so high was a boiler went out.
Okay.
And so we're expecting that we may have to increase that fund annually moving forward because we expect that those kinds of issues are going to start to come up in a building of that age. So just to be aware that I think in the 2016 budget, we did bump that, not to 300, but I think we bumped it to 200 or 250. So we are going to bump it a little bit, but not this high.
Did we do any increase at the time the building was expanded? Do you remember?
No, we did not. So we expanded the building, what, two years ago now, or a year and a half, I think, and it has been the same amount since inception that I'm aware of.
So this was probably inevitable, just based on the expansion, if nothing else, let alone the age?
President Jackson, I would agree with you.
Okay, the next line item you'll see under the administration, it was one of the capital betterment accounts. We had $8,500 budgeted in that account, and we actually needed to bump it up because of a Questica software purchase we made. It's for our new budgeting software that we'll be using in 2016. So we bumped that account up by $71,000. Then, starting with finance, in the finance contracted labor line item, we had $2,500 originally budgeted. We'd like to bump that up by $50,000. We hired on Brady Martz to help us with our year-end processes, and we believe, based on invoices we already received and the amount of work they've done, it should be around a $50,000 increase from where we originally budgeted. Also in finance, overtime, we didn't have any overtime budgeted. I think part of that was due to the fact that, you know, we were looking to hire a finance director. We have been unable to do so at this point. We did have a deputy administrator, as you're all aware, for a brief stint, but without that continuity, we did have to bump up our overtime by about $20,000. And then the final addition for finance, under our audits, we originally budgeted $23,000, $23,500, and we'd like to increase that by $20,000. That's simply based on the extra time that the auditor is required to spend here. They spent a lot of time going through our grant fund and helping us out with a lot of our year-end entries. So that's where that extra cost comes in. Moving on to police, overtime, they were budgeted originally at $160,000. They were under-budgeted, and we would like to bump that up to $280,000 total, which is a $120,000 increase.
Okay, do we remember what we budgeted for 2016, then?
I don't have that number with me, but it was increased based on the amount we spent in 2015.
I guess, you know, we've talked about some reforecasting. If this is an indicator, we may as well face it, 2016.
President Jackson, they continue to operate with about a two-person deficit in the police department, so overtime is going to be expected.
Also with police, under the equipment account, they were originally budgeted at $90,000, and we'd like to increase that by $150,000 for a Zirker technology purchase that the department made. I believe that purchase is mainly for records-keeping management systems. And then moving on to street, the first line item we'd like to increase in street is electrical services. That's basically for maintenance and repair on streetlights around town. It was originally budgeted at $40,000, and we'd like to increase that up to $115,000.
Okay, Mr. Maury, we skipped an engineering line item?
Oh, I apologize. Engineering, that engineering fees line item, that's money we spent out of the general fund, contracted out for specific projects. We originally budgeted at $150,000. Right now, we spent about $346 -- right between $346 and $347,000, so we'd like to bump that up by $350,000. Or, excuse me, $200,000 to $350,000.
And, sorry to keep interrupting you here, but that's our city engineer's position?
No, that's our city engineer's actually under a contracted labor line item. This engineering fees is money that's contracted out for specific projects that gets charged to the general fund. I'm not sure the specific reason why it gets charged to the general fund.
So these wouldn't be our CIP projects? These would be?
Correct, President Jackson. Those CIP projects, those contracted expenses are expensed to that project. These would be things that don't happen projects, such as the work that we've done on State Avenue. We've had some issues with some drainage in that area, some upset residents. There's no project, so to speak. So it's items like that that incur these kinds of fees.
Okay. And then if you could go over the electrical again?
Okay. Excuse me. The electrical services is for maintenance and repair of streetlights around town. It was originally budgeted for at $40,000, and we would like to increase that by $75,000 up to $115,000, based on the amount we spent in 2015.
So do we see that as being recurring?
President Jackson, we are moving to LED lights, so some of our newer light systems are going to be way more efficient than they were today. This also includes repairs, and those are difficult to project. That may be an item in the reforecast that we take a good, hard look at.
Okay.
The next line item for the street department is equipment. That line item was originally budgeted at $122,000, and there was a snowplow that was charged to that that wasn't included in the 2015 budget. Also, there was a sign and striping truck that was meant to be put in the general capital lease fund that was moved over into the street department's capital betterments fund, capital betterments line item. Just based on timing, we weren't able to receive the bids in time, so that's why it got moved over into the street department. And then the next item for street is salt and deicer, originally budgeted at $70,000. Just based on, you know, the year we've had and the amount of new streets that we have to take care of, we had to increase that by $85,000 up to $155,000 total.
So we doubled it, and we haven't even hit the heavy snow?
Well, it's been from January 1st.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure where the previous budget number came from, but it was in the 2015 budget book at $70,000, and right now, we're at about $110,000 total.
So the expenses incurred aren't quite double, but we do have a significant amount of additional streets that weren't complete when the 2015 budget was created in July of In the 2016 budget, I believe we've accounted for those extra streets, and so we shouldn't have to increase the '16 budget, but it is something we'll make note of and take another look at.
I'm just looking at the amount of snow. I know we had a, in January through March of last year, was heavy, but so far this year, pretty insipid.
Right.
Would this have included our, I expect it did include, our original purchase of brine for the new facility?
It would have, the equipment, yes. I mean, excuse me, not the equipment, but the salt, those types of product, yes, would have been included in that.
And I apologize, as of yesterday in our trial balance, that line account is at $153,000. So that's why it's getting bumped up to $155,000 total.
So it is double.
The next line item we have on your packet is the museum for contracted labor. We didn't have any amount originally budgeted for the museum, and that $25,000 you're seeing is for a project fee to the Economic Stewardship Company. Then moving on, down to oil impact, we have a transfer to CIP street projects. In our 2015 budget book, we have $81 million listed as amount to transfer to building construction and CIP projects. We won't need to use all that $81 million, and actually, after doing some looking, the building construction fund has a positive balance, and we don't have a lot more expenses that are coming out of that fund, so we won't need to transfer any money to the building construction fund. So we would like to transfer that $34 million that you see on your sheet into those street project funds to zero out that balance, and it'll actually give us a positive balance. And it's just based on the amounts we had budgeted in our CIP spreadsheet. The next line item down, also from oil impact, is a transfer to water distribution. Again, this was for projects that were in our 2015 budget book that were set aside. We didn't have a transfer account to transfer those funds over, but we're going to get that account set up so we can transfer that $7 million over into the water distribution fund to pay for those projects.
Water distribution fund, that's actually the enterprise?
It is.
Fund?
Yes. And the same goes for wastewater on the line below. Nearly $5 million you're seeing there, again, for projects that were budgeted out of that wastewater fund. So we just took the amounts that were set aside, and we'll be making that transfer. The next line item for the expenditures is going to be coming out of hospitality tax for the Theodore Roosevelt Library. We didn't have any amount budgeted in 2015. It was actually originally supposed to be budgeted for 2016 and 2017. Due to some changes in the timing of the project, we'll be making that payment in 2015. So that's why you're seeing that $150,000 increase. A transfer out of the general fund to general capital leases. We originally had $200,000 budgeted in that line item. We're asking to increase that by just over $300,000 to both zero out the fund. And we also have a fire truck in that fund, and we have a grant coming in, and we're actually required by the state to use all the grant money we receive, otherwise we lose whatever money we don't use in that current year. So we increased that to pay for the entire grant amount that we received. And then the final two line items you're seeing are from the water and sales tax revenue bond, and those are just on there because this bond was started in 2015, so it wasn't in our budget book, and we just wanted you to be aware that these expenses are coming If there's no questions, I'll move on to revenues. Starting off with the general fund revenues, building permits, we were originally budgeted at $1.25 million, and we're planning on lowering that down by $650,000. We're not in the ballpark of meeting our projections as far as that line item goes, so we want to lower that down just to be accurate with our accounting, to make sure that we're adjusting properly for the revenues that we won't receive. We'd also like to bump up our property tax revenue budget. We were budgeted just under $4.2 million, and we're fairly close to about $100,000 over that amount we budgeted originally. So we'd like to bump that up just to be transparent with the amount of revenues we're receiving.
And just for the populace that'll watch this, that does not mean that there's been a property tax increase. That's simply based upon the amount of properties that were completed and/or paid this year, but doesn't represent an increase.
The line item below, under library, Stark County Rural Property Taxes, same reasoning, we received more than we had initially budgeted, so we'd like to move that up by $75,000 as well, just to be transparent with the revenues we're receiving. There's actually four line items below, all transfers, that were shown on the expenditure side. That's just the other side of the account when we make those transfers. So the numbers are all going to be the same. Again, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. And then moving down to the water and sales tax revenue bond, again, just because it wasn't budgeted in 2015, we wanted to put that on there just to make sure we're showing that we are receiving that income in 2015. In the 1% sales tax, we originally budgeted it at $8 million. We'd like to lower that down to $7,500,000, just based on the collections we received so far. We think $7.5 million is a safe bet to where we'll finish 2015. And the reason the line item below, the 1/2% sales tax, isn't exactly half of the 1%, in our 2015 budget book, the 1/2% sales tax was budgeted at $4,150,000, and the 1% was budgeted at $8 million even. So we're just lowering that down by $400,000 to make sure the 1/2% is exactly half of where we budgeted the 1% sales tax. So if there aren't any questions at this time, I'll move on to the encumbrances. The first line item you're seeing there is apparatus acquisition for the fire department. It's actually, it was purchased in 2015, but it won't be paid for until 2016, so we would like to move that $125,000 over into the 2016 budget. The next line item below for HR/Legal Services, time tracking system, was budgeted at $15,000 in 2015. That money was not spent. We have not, at this point, purchased a time tracking system, so we'd like to move that $15,000 budget into 2016 as well. Under forestry, we have a replacement truck that was budgeted in 2015 as well. It also was not purchased, but we believe it will need to be purchased in 2016. Again, under fire, the pumper truck repair, the repair was going to be done in 2015. Again, based on timing, it's going to be moved over to 2016, so we'd like to encumber $20,000 to pay for that repair in 2016. Under police, that $5,000 you're seeing, in 2015, there was $750,000 budgeted for the animal shelter. Most of those expenses were covered in 2014 and were not needed. There is some warranty issues that will need to be resolved in 2016, so we'd like to put $5,000 aside to resolve those issues. In buildings and sites, we'd also like to encumber $7,000 for city hall renovations, just for some finished-up work that hasn't been done and won't be done until 2016. And then finally, the landfill acquisition in solid waste, we had $250,000 set aside. That money won't be spent in 2015, so we'd like to move that forward to 2016 as well. So if there are no questions there, I do have some slides to show. I know there were some questions asked the last time I presented the financial reports. Just to give you an idea, based on some of these amendments, what are numbers will look like?
Mr. Maury, before you, if I could, before you leave these sheets, if we go back to expenditures, and I know I'm probably oversimplifying this, but on the expenditure side, there are 12 items that we've increased somewhere in the range of about $1.3 million. And I'm looking at items above the oil impact line items, all general fund items. And then we have decreased revenue on the general fund side. Can you explain to me how that balances out? What am I missing?
That's going to be based on our cash balance right now in the general fund. We have a cash balance where that $2 million, almost a $2 million drop, will be covered by our cash balance in the general fund, and we feel that we are being as transparent and as accurate as we can be by doing these amendments the way they're shown on this sheet.
So every year when we do our budget, we have a line item in that budget that I think says use of cash, or, I can't remember, is that the term?
I believe you're accurate.
So what we're saying is we're increasing that number by the difference in the balance here?
I believe that's correct, yes.
And as I recall, that number has ranged $200,000, $300,000 at budget time, at least the last couple, three years.
And to make the numbers match at the end, right?
Right.
Our balancing account, yeah.
Yep.
So rather than two or three, so this balance has to be added to that number?
Okay.
I'm asking.
Yes.
Is my understanding it right?
In order to get it to equate, by law, we have to balance our budget, so that's exactly what we'll have to do.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on these sheets before I move on to the slides? All right, so moving on, this first slide I did want to show you, there was some questions about the enterprise funds. The last time I presented these slides, there was a $6 million negative cash balance in the water and wastewater fund. You can see on there the revenue's increased by, I believe it's about $11 million, and that's because of those transfers we made from oil impact into the water and wastewater funds to account for those CIP projects that were originally budgeted in those funds. So based on that, that is a rough, that's a rough idea of where our cash balances should end at year-end, and that's how they were at the end of November if we included those Moving on to the 1% sales tax, as we mentioned before, we originally had budgeted $8 million in collections. We moved that number down by $500,000, but left the interest revenue at $85,000. So that's why you're seeing the $7,585,000 total revenues. No changes on the expense side, and so the only change on the bottom line you're seeing is a $500,000 decrease in our ending cash balance. And I should be clear that all these collection numbers are as of the end of November. These are the same slides you saw in our last commission meeting, just with the transfers and amendments included.
When does the, you know, the state pays one month behind, right? When does that catch up? Do we get a double payment at one point?
In January.
So we won't get January, basically, December's till January?
Right.
Okay. Well, but it doesn't really catch up, does it?
It's just--
We'll have 12 payments in 2016 as opposed to 11 in 2015.
Yeah, I believe that to be accurate, because we--
Just carry on, 11 makes sure it was one month behind, right?
No, they made a change this year, Commissioner Steiner, that they delayed the payment to us by about a week, which meant that it doesn't reach our financial cycle. So it was more, because of that delay, it caused our financial records to be off a little bit.
From an accounting standpoint, we're always going to miss that one month.
December--
From a practical standpoint, the money's there, but it's a timing issue.
Yeah.
But we're not going to get 13 payments in 2016.
Correct. We'll always account for them so that there's 12 payments every year.
So even though we get paid in January, it'll show in 2015?
Our December payment will show up in our, in January, but shown on this cycle, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
It just makes all of our records late.
Then also with the 1/2% sales tax, very similar situation. Again, we lowered that one by $400,000, so that's why you're seeing the total revenues down. Also, our total expenses, that number shouldn't be $3 million, it should actually be $1,500,000. That's based on, there was a $2 million transfer that was budgeted to the building construction fund that we decided that we won't do, just because that building construction fund has a positive cash balance, so the transfer is really not necessary. We are planning on using the funds we have, and then in the future, possibly 2017, we can zero out that building construction fund and take the money out if it's not needed. And moving on to hospitality tax, the only change you're going to see in this slide from the last time the financial reports were presented is on the year-to-date expenses, and that is for the $150,000 from the Theodore Roosevelt Library. So that changes our cash balance by $150,000. So that changes our cash balance by $150,000 also.
So even with the huge decrease in hotel use, where we only saw 16% decrease?
And we believe that we should meet our original budgeted amount for Hospitality Tax collections.
Well, and just as a reminder, Commissioner Decker, Hospitality Tax also includes Prepared Foods and a few other things. Occupancy tax, which we'll go on to next, is strictly related to rentals.
Okay. What am I missing here? If we increased our expenses by $150,000, how did our cash balance go up?
I believe our cash balance, it was added on, it must have been based on a formula error, but it was increased by $150,000, so the number's actually $300,000 lower than any cash balance you're seeing on the bottom line.
So it's $673,000?
And then moving on to Occupancy Tax. I just wanted to show this again, just to show that we do, again, believe that we will meet our original budgeted amount for our occupancy tax revenues. There won't be any changes on this slide from what you saw at the last financial report And then the final slide I have for you is the Street Projects Fund. You're going to see a very large increase in revenues based on that transfer shown that we talked about before. With those transfers made, it'll leave us with a cash balance at that point of just
The money that goes into the Street Project account is either Oil Impact money or sales tax money, correct? There's no other?
Right. There is a very small amount of revenues that'll come in, special assessments, things of that sort, but it's a minimal amount. So the majority of the money does come from Oil Impact. And that's the final slide I have for you, so if there is any other questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions for Mr. Maury? You know, the only thing I would say, not a question, but as fast as things are moving, as fast as our revenue sources are changing and our expenditures, I really think this reforecast we're doing is really critical. I really do. We don't want something to sneak up on us here. There's some big numbers here in this balancing this year. So I sure hope we can do that the first month or two of the new year. Good job, Mr. Maury. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
So we probably need a motion to approve the budget amendments and transfers.
The move, President.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion about these amendments or the transfers? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Okay, Future Fund. Mr. Maury again?
Yes, I believe you also have received a page in your packet as well showing the So the first three lines you'll see on there is our transfer from the Future Fund to the General Fund. These numbers, all on here, were actually discussed in 2014 and were moved over after 2015, or after the beginning of 2015, excuse me. So it was originally budgeted at $328,000, and then we actually moved over $334,000, and that's based on the 4% of the Future Fund balance at the time the transfer's discussed. Based on those numbers, I believe we'll have about a $257,000 transfer from the Future Fund to the General Fund, but we won't see that amount transferred until 2016, just again to be as accurate as we can be with our transfers, to make sure that the transfer we make is exactly 4% of that balance.
And that, that transfer, again, I might be oversimplifying here, but we see that as a, as writing down or applying it to property tax. Do we note it that way as a property tax reduction?
In the, in the budget?
The general fund budget. In essence, it's what it amounts to.
It's exactly what it amounts to, President Jackson. I'm not sure if we note it that way. In the sales, when we transfer sales tax into the general fund, that is exactly what we do.
Right.
I don't recall, off the top of my head, if we note this transfer. Mr. Maury, can you answer that question?
I cannot.
Okay. That's something we love to research.
It's probably, it's probably not important, except to the public. Now, they should know that our property tax would probably have to increase this amount each year, were it not for this Future Fund. I think that's a fair statement.
It is a fair statement. And we, it's a good point, and I think it's something that we should look into, make sure that it does reflect a property tax write-down.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Maury.
All right, and then below that, you're seeing the transfer from the General Fund to the Future Fund. We budgeted $71,000 in 2015. The actual number you're seeing there, again, is from 2014, but wasn't transferred until 2015, just for accuracy purposes. The transfer from the General Fund to the Future Fund is based on 50% of oil royalties collected and all land sales above $50,000. So based on those numbers, we'll have a year-end transfer that will be completed, most likely on the first of 2016, of $46,850. So an increase of $167,996 from our initial budgeted amount.
So what will that make the balance, the grand total in the Future Fund?
I don't have that actual number with me right now, but I can find that out for you and get that number to you.
It would be the 334 divided by .04, huh?
I think that's fair to say. And I'm not sure if there's any other factors that go into that amount that I'm aware of, but I believe that, yes, you are correct.
Okay. Maybe at our next meeting, just, we could mention that.
Absolutely.
That balances. Okay, anything else, Mr. Maury, on the Future Fund?
Nope, that's, that's everything I have for you, unless there's any other questions.
Any questions on the Future Fund? Look for a motion to transfer the amount shown.
The move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion, any further discussion on the Future Fund? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Okay, next item, Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, yes. Thank you, President Jackson. I would like to refer your attention to the handout of the map that I provided to you this morning. The item itself is the NDSU Research Extension Land Purchase. I have, for reference only, please, it's not done to scale. I'm not an engineer, so this is for reference only. It represents the red rectangle, and it is 20 acres of land that's located on the southeast corner of 30th and 21st. Sometimes 30th is referred to as the interim bypass. So that's the land that we're talking about. It's currently for sale. The Research Extension Office has attempted to sell this land a couple times in order to facilitate infrastructure extensions into that area, especially for the school, which I've also roughly estimated in that blue rectangle immediately adjacent to the red one. In order to facilitate infrastructure extensions to that school, the acquisition of this property has become paramount. I think it's safe to say, through the conversations that we've had with the administration at Research Extension, they're very concerned about surface improvements, roads, lighting, things of that nature. They've been very easy to work with, with underground, water, sewer, things of that nature, but an above-ground work is difficult for them, primarily because we intend to special assess the cost of that surface improvements, and that would mean that the Research Extension would experience that cost when the special assessments would be allocated. So what we've done instead is put a bid in for $12,000 an acre. We are the high bidder. We were just made aware of that late last week. The adjacent property in the area sold for $40-plus thousand dollars an acre, so you can see that our offer was rather conservative. I do believe that in a year or two, or some point in the future, we'll be able to turn around and resell this, this land at a profit. But what it allows us to do with ownership is we can then assign right away, we can, we can do all the things that we, we need to do to make sure that the improvements to facilitate the school and that property itself are done accurately, easily, and most of all, on time. They'll be timely. So it is with, that intention that I present to you today, and the possibility of purchasing this land at $12,000 an acre times 20 acres, that's $240,000. My suggestion is we use the Future Fund revenues as the purchase revenue source for this land. I would also suggest that when we sell this land, that all of those revenues go back to the Future Fund. Normally, if it's the only sale that would happen, we'd take $50,000 out. I'm suggesting that we not do that in this case. It, and depending on when the sale happens, we may have already sold land, it may not come into play, but I would request that the commission consider, at least, having all the revenue go back to the Future Fund so that it is fully paid, and maybe even with some excess dollars. So with that, I'd pause for any questions that the commission may have regarding this land sale. We do have a purchase agreement. We've had some technical difficulties in trying to get that purchase agreement printed out for you and shared with you. Mr. Selinger has not been available. He's facilitating this land transfer for the Research Extension Office. So in any, assuming you make an offer or a motion to approve, I'd also request that you include a contingency that would allow administration, including our city attorney, to review that purchase agreement.
Mr. Kessel, one question, and I meant to ask this in our discussion about the Future Fund, but we do have some obligations, not obligations, I guess, with the Future Fund dollars now, correct? We have a loan with the airport, I believe?
Correct, right.
Are there more than that that I'm not remembering?
Not that I remember, Commissioner Jackson.
It's just that loan?
It's just that loan, that those proceeds have been out, and so it's, it's simply a matter of repayment.
Okay.
Obligation.
Okay. As far as this purchase, I know, and we talked about this last summer, I think we hoped that this wouldn't have to happen, but now it turns out it's the most efficient way to get this street right-of-way issue and the related issues done. And the price in comparison to-
Right.
Prices of the last three years is palatable.
And Commissioner Jackson, you're exactly correct. This is, this I think is the third time this land has been available for sale. We actually approached Research Extension after not having a sale the first two times and requested that they do it again so that we could put in an offer.
Do we have any plans already of zoning for this land?
I believe this land is already zoned, and we're not proposing any zoning changes.
But it's probably rural residential or?
I think this is zoned ag, or ag.
My, that's what I'm going to guess, is ag.
Okay.
I don't know that for sure, Commissioner Decker. That's something I can find out for you, but we will anticipate upon development that this zoning will change.
If it's ag, it's probably not going to stay ag.
No.
No, but this will also allow us to plat it if we choose to, and with the street dedication, I expect we would. Any further questions? Mr. Kessel? So the motion we need is to approve the purchase and authorize staff to execute the purchase agreement. Is that correct?
Correct, upon our review, yeah. Yep, that's correct. I just want to make sure that, that if there are some anomalies in the purchase agreement, that we can negotiate those with the Research Extension and still have your approval to do so. I don't anticipate any, but just in case.
But the price is set.
Price is set. That's not a negotiating point.
So with the addition to the motion of the, all of the money goes back in the Future Fund?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I do think Mr. Frenzel's addition is really important, to make sure that gets into the wording of the motion. Aye, if not, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. And one final item. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you. This, at this meeting, we'd go over several terms of Boards of Recommendation and, and other boards that you, as commissioners, sit on and that several other residents of Dickinson sit on. The first one that I'll refer to are the sheet that's titled City Boards and Committees with Members' Terms expiring as of 12/31/15. The first item that we have is the Urban Forestry, and the City Commission should be aware that this is a committee that has had little work in the last few years. They've planned essentially one event, and we're contemplating the idea of having Planning and Zoning take on that responsibility. That thought has been presented to Planning and Zoning. To my knowledge, they've not made a final decision on whether or not they would accept those responsibilities. If they do, that would mean that the Urban Forestry Committee, as you see it on here, would not exist. I'm going to ask that we not take action on Urban Forestry. Generally, their meetings happen a little later than January and February anyways, so until our Planning and Zoning makes a final decision, if they choose not to incorporate them, we can bring this back to you in January. But those are the folks that are on Urban Forestry today. They've all been contacted, and if this committee continues, they would all be interested in serving. So the next item that we have then is Planning and Zoning. We have one member who desires reappointment in Mr. Abrahamson. He's also the chair of that committee. We also have one opening on that commission, and it's my recommendation that Shirley Ducart fill that appointment. She's been a former city commissioner. She's a realtor broker in our community for several years and seems specially suited to provide some good advice and decisions on Planning and Zoning. The next is the Board of Adjustments. Larry Bars and Trevor Ernst both desire reappointment on the Board of Adjustments. We recommend that they both be reappointed. Civil Service, Mr. Lisco has ably served for many years on civil service. He continues to enjoy warmer climates in the colder climate that we have during January, February, so he's not re-enlisting. We do have another gal who's, would like to take his spot. We didn't get a resume and proper information quite yet, so we're asking that that position not be filled and that we'll bring forth a name to you in January. And then Susie Soblick is the next appointment that we'd like to request made. Ms. Soblick also is a longtime resident of Dickinson, and so is her family, and has her family- some special experience in running a company or helping to, to run a company. We believe she'd be an excellent addition to the Civil Service Commission. So the recommendation that we have for you today is to appoint Earl Abrahamson and Shirley Ducart to Planning and Zoning, Larry Bars and Trevor Ernst to Board of Adjustments, and Susie Sobelik to the Civil Service Commission. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, and then we need a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Mr. President ought to make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of these boards? Not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Kessel.
Thank you. Our last item then is, is speaking of boards and committees that you specifically as commissioners sit on, we try to even these out so that there's an equal amount of appointments for each of you. You'll notice some, some changes in the document itself. You'll notice that there's an R. What that means is, is required, so that, we've not used that type of language in the past, but the Pension Board language in its creation actually does require that the president of the commission sit on that board, and the meet and confer, although that committee hasn't met for some time, also does require the president of the commission to be involved in that. So, so we replace those, the numeral with a, with an alpha so that we don't get confused in the future. I'd also like to mention that this would mean, if, if you approve this recommendation, that Commissioner Frenzel would sit on the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities and on the Future Fund. We have two members of the commission that need to sit on that board per its rules. Commissioner Oatmans is already on that board, and this would also appoint Commissioner You'll also notice that there's a change in the Southwest Regional Grant Committee because Mr. Jackson has taken on the responsibilities of the president of the commission. We felt it necessary to recommend a change in the Southwest Regional Grant Committee, and Commissioner Decker, I'm recommending that you take on those responsibilities, that it, it makes a nice even split in terms of committee appointments. So I believe those are the only changes. So Commissioner Steiner, you also would be on, on meet and confer, the Southwest Regional Grant Committee, the Stark Development Corporation, and the Dickinson Downtown Group. Commissioner Decker, you would be on Southwest Regional Grant Committee, Dickinson Public Library, Dickinson Regional Airport Authority, and the Dickinson Downtown Group. Commissioner Oatmans, the Roosevelt Custer Regional Council, the Future Fund, Stark County Planning and Zoning, and Convention and Visitors Group. Mr. Frenzel, I've mentioned yours, and President Jackson, Planning and Zoning, employee pension and meet and confer, as we've discussed, the Recycling Committee, which we are planning to revitalize in 2016. We'd like to see that effort come back onto the front burner. And then the last being the Stark County Planning and Zoning Board. You'll also notice that there is a staff appointment of Captain Dave Wilkie to the Community Action Board. That is something that we transferred about two years ago, and Captain Wilkie is willing to continue to serve in that role. So those, those are the changes, those are the appointments that I'm recommending as staff members, certainly if, if you have other ideas, it's certainly up for discussion. And by the way, you all are welcome to attend any of these. I know Mr. Oatmans does, does attend the Employee Pension Board with regularity, and that is just fine.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Kessel? You know, the only comment that I have, more of a big-picture one, I think we should be continually looking at these committees to make sure they are functioning and necessary. None of us need meetings that aren't producing something. I find myself wondering, do we really need a recycling committee? I think staff is looking at recycling right now. If there's a, if there's a reason, let's do it, that's fine, but I, I wonder, urban forestry, we may be combining that, meet and confer. I, you know, you've said that that committee doesn't meet. If it's critical to have it, great. I even wonder about Future Fund. I, I don't know what, you guys talk about it, Future Fund.
You've sat in on that before.
I don't think so.
Yeah, you went with me. It's quarterly, and it's right after the pension. We just look at, it's the meeting that American Bank Center does to give us performance.
Looking at investments.
It's, that's exactly what it, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, you've...
Okay, but just a general comment, just in a spirit of pushing back against the growth of bureaucracy, let's challenge ourselves.
Right.
That if we don't need some of these groups, let's get rid of them. Having said that, do we, do we need an emotion, a motion to approve?
You do, you do, because some of these are, are outside committees, so like for the airport and downtown and such, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, anything? If not, we'll look for a motion.
Make the motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Kessel?
That, that is it.
Anything else? For a motion to adjourn?
The move.
And a second?
Second.